Yes, Mr Wiggley. We're grateful to, I think to Mr Kimlin in particular, for sending us by email Tesco and Secretary of State, 1995, both the PNCR report and the weekly Law Reports report, and Law Holmes, first instance, 2017 PTSR, and Hopkins Holmes in the Supreme Court, 2017, one weekly Law Reports. I was trying to piece this together. One of the queries we had, I think, was to what degree had Lord Carnwood expressly endorsed what was said at the first instance in Law Holmes. He refers to that at paragraph 54, and he says, he refers to a helpful discussion at 42 et sec. It's not quite clear what, perhaps, what et sec extends to. But there it is. We can't, I mean, obviously, we can't debate that here.
My lord, just for completeness, I've also forwarded by your clerk
Yeah.
the Muller case,
Oh, have you?
which I referred to in my skeleton.
Oh, sorry.
No, it's not at all false at all. It was only in the last 10 minutes, five or 10 minutes.
All right. Well, we must have set off.
Technologically challenged doing it, so.
We were on the other side of the quad.
But for completeness, your lordships will have it, and you'll be able to see the reference
Right.
that I make in my skeleton. But I don't, I'm going to continue if I may with what I was submitting
Of course. please.
in relation to, just prior to the lunch on German. And in terms of what was discussed by the way of alternatives, and I've already dealt with the transfer alternative, and I won't revisit that, but just in general terms, you've already seen at page 311 in the supplementary bundle, the extract from the applicant's environmental statement,
Yeah.
which sets out the do-nothing alternative and alternative locations. And the do-nothing alternative compares compares to the situation where if you don't have the secondary aggregate, you'd have to use primary aggregate to meet the need. Now, I was then just struggling before lunch to work out the extent to which, if at all, that was referred to in terms in the officer's report. Now, the environmental statement itself is obviously referred to, but not the alternative section per se. That said, in my submission, it's very clearly covered. All the substance of what is discussed in that extract from the environmental statement is discussed at paragraphs 5, sorry, 7.5 on page 48 to 7.11 on page 50 of the officer's report.
Can I, oh, sorry to interrupt. Can I just ask?
Yeah.
There are three bullet points at 4.8.1. Do-nothing, similar development, alternative location. There's a third bullet, alternative development at Gale Common Ash disposal site. Do we know what that said?
So 4.8.1.
So on page 311?
Oh, sorry, back to chat 12.
Because we got do-nothing, and we got alternative locations, but we haven't got the alternative development bit.
If I may, just to assist the court on that point, the reason why this extract was put in was specifically to address the do-nothing scenario, that being a point that hadn't previously been raised. And hence, I think, the extract only is intended to cover off that point. But your lordship's absolutely right. Because we've only addressed that point, the full totality of that section on alternatives is not included.
Thank you.
So just following through, my lords, we have that ES extract. We also then have 7.1.4 on page 85, which references the consideration of alternatives and refers back to 7.3 and 7.6. And as I was just submitting to your lordships, I say that read together, 7.5, which includes 7.6, 7.5 onwards to around 7.11 discusses those alternatives. So if you see, and I won't read, obviously, I won't read it all out, but you'll see there's a number of references, starting with the top of page 49. The MPPW, that's the National Planning Policy Waste, is of course the use of material that can replace other materials that would otherwise be used, such as in the case of the use of PFA as a substitute for primary one aggregate. And that's discussed again in 7.6. And further down the page, you'll see, like, the bottom of 7.7, there is, as outlined above, a principle of policy support for the supply and use of secondary aggregate as an alternative to primary land one aggregates continuing through the emerging policy. And then you'll see at 7.11.
Sorry, I just brought up that passage, or 7.7. 7.7, did you say?
7.7, yeah. That's what I was just reading from, the bottom of 7.7.
The bottom of it, yes.
Yeah. And then you'll see there's reference to the Sustainability in Carbon Review as part of the application in 7.8, which describes key markets for PFA and what it's used for. And then over the page, that's discussed in more detail, again, 7.9. The applicant's review states that the United Kingdom is a significant net importer of secondary aggregates. And it goes on to say, at the end of that, well, it talks there about the, one of the issues being that the coal-fired fuel stations are gradually closing for other environmental reasons, which means that the availability of this PFA is declining, with the fresh PFA. And then at the end of 7.9, it says, with regard to emerging MWJP policy DO1, this is in principle a sustainable development in terms of enabling the use of deposited PFA as a secondary aggregate with potential for approval. And then particularly talks about the environmental issues. 7.11, second sentence, it would also serve the environmental objective envisaged within the MPPF paragraph eight by minimizing waste by extracting the PFA in order for use as a secondary aggregate, thereby reducing the need for the extraction of naturally occurring resources in the form of primary materials. And a similar point tying this together is made in 7.103 on page 76. Well, you'll see about just less than halfway down that paragraph, there's whereas. Whereas it is considered that in terms of policy SP15, the applicant's proposing that the development will contribute to reducing carbon emissions through the use of the PFA, reducing the requirement for the use of primary aggregates in developments, and also the intention to move material, the transport of the material away from long-term HGV use towards a more sustainable means of transport. So, my lords, whilst the chapter on alternatives in the ES is not specifically referred to, when you read all those paragraphs together in my submission, the issues that are raised in that chapter are effectively covered and discussed in the officer's report. So, my lords, the, I say that for that reason, well, for two reasons. Ground two fails, first of all, because ground one fails, and you have my submissions on ground one. But secondly, ground two fails because there simply was no better environmental option put forward by anyone else. And the practicability of the transport alternatives was squarely considered and before members. And to the extent alternatives was considered in the environmental statement, that was also considered in substance in the officer's report. So there was no, there was no failure to consider alternatives, even if there had been a requirement to do so. And that in substance meant that there would have been no material difference had any more weight been put on the issue of BPEU, BEO. So, and that really concludes my submissions on ground two.
Yeah.
My lords, I don't really intend to address your lordships on ground three, because I say effectively, if I'm, that there is no, it overlaps effectively with grounds one and two in the sense that if there were any infelicity of language in the officer's report, it made no material difference to the outcome. And I have, I say that on the basis of ground one and ground two.
That sounds like it going further than section 31 to A, all the way to simplex. You don't have to go all the way to simplex.
No.
I don't believe.
No.
Or do you?
Well, highly likely. I mean, your lordships, all I will say is, my learned friend, Mr Kimlin, relies on Plan B quite properly, that your lordships are not able to.
Plan B.
Plan B.
Earth.
Plan B, Earth.
I think.
Yes, yes. I think Plan B are involved maybe.
You may very well be right. My memory is failing me, I'm afraid. Never mind it. He has referred to the passage in the judgment of the Court of Appeal in Plan B, Earth.
That's, that's right. But my lords, I say that that doesn't detract from what is said in the Gathercole authority at top three of the authorities.
That's more Justice Colson.
Yeah. And particularly paragraphs 38 to 40 on page 13. And whilst it's obviously right from Plan B that your lordships should not in a position to exercise your own planning judgment, you are in a position to undertake your own objective assessment of the decision-making process. And that's, I get that from paragraph 40 in Gathercole.
No.
And when you do that, and that's the exercise we've been doing for most of the day, when you do that, you see that, as I said, under, underground, as I said, under the other grounds, that the paucity of lines of inquiry that could have made a difference are so minimal, if existent, in terms of looking for a better environmental option, that it is highly unlikely, if not inevitable, that the same decision would have been reached had any different advice been given.
Well, if the advice had been, I don't think you should give it any weight. But if you don't agree, you will have to decide what weight to give it. And no one's told you what the best pragmatic environmental option is. So you would be in some difficulty reaching a conclusion on that question. If that had been the advice, the outcome might very well have been different. Mind it, they might have said, well, son, we'd better explore this subject.
Well, they may have thought we'd better explore this subject, but then they would have looked at the information before the, before them that was from the applicant and contained in the officer's report. And they would have seen that, to the extent there were any alternatives, they were either not practicable, so for example, the transport options, or there was not a, any alternative that was asserted to be better from an environmental perspective.
Well, do-nothing was clearly better from a purely environmental perspective, unless you bring into account the fact that you'd have had to get your secondary aggregates from somewhere else, which would have suffered a great deal of environmental damage too, no doubt. But the material to enable that judgment to be made just wasn't before this committee.
Well, my lords, I disagree with that, because it was clearly considered the alternative of primary, of using a primary aggregate or having to, or the paucity of alternatives in terms of getting secondary aggregate from elsewhere. In the real world, if there had been a realistic alternative option that was, was, had been put forward by, for example, Whitley Parish Council, and that had been entirely ignored, then I accept that there may have been an issue, if obviously my learned friend succeeds on ground one. But there simply was no possible alternative available to make that, to consider or make that assessment. So my lords, unless I can assist you further, those are my submissions in my skeleton.
Right. Thank you very much, Miss Wiggley. Thank you very much, Miss Wiggley. Yes, Mr Booth?
My lord, thank you. I begin by saying that the interested party obviously commend the submissions of the first respondent to the court, and we do gratefully adopt those.
Are you not second respondent?
Yes, but we're commending the submissions of the first respondent.
Yes, yes, but you said interested party.
Well, I do apologise.
I think, I think, well, it may just be a, I'm sorry, but it's, we need to be. We need to be accurate on this. You are, you are actually the second respondent.
My lord, yes. Earlier in the piece, we were the interested party.
You were.
We are now the second respondent.
Yes.
My lord, as I say, we do gratefully.
You commend, and adopt.
Yes, the submissions of my learned friend, Miss Wiggley. I'm now going to look to make some further submissions. I do hope concisely, I do apologise in advance that there will be a degree of overlap, but I'm obviously not going to test your lordship's patience. I'm going to begin by making four brief points, which we submit arise out of points put by the Court to my learned friend, Miss Wiggley, and then points arising out of my learned friend, Mr Kimlin's submissions. Point one is as follows. Your lordship rightly put, Miss Wiggley, that, in a sense, words matter, and that my learned friend, Mr Kimlin, is entitled to say that words matter. We do not seek to dispute that proposition. And the court is, of course, right that a degree of precision, as your lordship put it, a degree of precision is required. However, at the same time, the court must also have in mind the very relevant judicial observations relating to the, for example, benevolence which should be employed when considering an officer's report, as per your lordship's decision in Mansell at paragraph 42, sub-paragraph two. And also, the fact that the officer's report is, of course, not a statute, as per the decision in Oxford at page 1110G. So as I say, we recognise that clarity of expression is desirable. We recognise that words matter, but we must bear in mind those other propositions which inform our appreciation of officer's reports. My lord, second point, BPEO. In my learned friend, Mr Kimlin's submissions this morning, we had something of a canter through the history and various, and varying stages of BPO. That is, of course, relevant by way of deep background, but I would not want there to be a loss of focus as to the application and relevance of BPO in the present context. Because the application of BPO in the present context is narrow. It only falls to be considered in the context of these proceedings in the context of policy 7.3A. That is it. It has no wider relevance. And I do say that because at certain points, it appeared as though my learned friend, Mr Kimlin, was bringing BPO in via an alternative side door in the context of green belt policy. And quite apart from anything else, what we asked the court to remember is that, as per paragraph 47 of our skeleton, in this matter, officers, and by extension, members, found no green belt harm beyond that harm which necessarily follows by reason of a development being inappropriate.
Well, I think they, they found, didn't they, if you go to section eight of the report, that there was, there were very special circumstances to justify inappropriate development in the green belt.
My lord, yes, but that follows necessarily in circumstances where there must, of course, be harm caused by definitional harm.
Oh, yes, they, well, they weigh, or she weighs, harm by reason of inappropriateness and any other harm resulting from the proposal, paragraph 8.6.
My lord, that's correct. But in terms of other green belt harms, save for inappropriateness, if one looks at the relevant paragraphs in the officer's report, one finds no finding of harm.
Yes, in fact, what is said is any potential harm to the green belt because of inappropriateness and any other harm resulting from the proposal.
Yes.
All I was pointing out was that the conclusion actually goes beyond what you'd submitted.
I'm grateful. Third point of these preliminary four points is a short legal one. And it relates to my learned friend, Mr Kimlin's reliance on Hopkins. And I say it as follows. We do not say that by reason of national policy changes, the decision-maker in this case was required not to attach weight to policy 7.3A. Rather, our case is that in light of national policy changes, it was reasonable for a decision-maker to attach no weight to that policy provision in light of the national policy changes. Now, my learned friend accepts, as he must, that it is open to a decision-maker to attach no weight to a policy or a policy provision. And I'm going to come to Tesco's in a moment, but he accepts that proposition. He has also stated in terms, in answer to your lordship's question, that he makes no challenge to the reasonableness of the decision on the part of members to attach no weight to the policy provision in the present case. So firstly, there is an entitlement to attach no weight. Secondly, there is no challenge to the reasonableness of doing that in the present context. The reason I make that, or I make those submissions, rather, on those legal points, is that, and now I come to the fourth of my initial submissions, is that in answer to a question from your lordship, it appeared to me as if my learned friend, Mr Kimlin, was in fact, for all practical purposes, resiling or seeking to move around those two propositions which I've just put to this court, and which I say are wholly unarguable. And your lordships will recall the exchanges regarding the form of words used in the officer's report. And the way, my lord, initially put it, your lordship, the point initially was to say that if we introduce the word judgement here, would that have made a difference? And you'll recall that my learned friend, Mr Kimlin, said, well, that wouldn't be good enough. One would need a far more extensive analysis and degree of granularity in the assessment. In that context, I do say that my learned friend is wrong, and what he is seeking to do is precisely what he warned that he would not do, which is to interfere with a planning judgment. Because in circumstances where an officer in considering a policy provision, of which there are myriad numbers that are relevant in the present context, in circumstances where an officer looks at a policy, exercises a planning judgment as to the degree of weight that should attach to it, having regard to its consistency with national policy, it is not open to my learned friend to challenge that judgment, save on grounds of rationality, which basis of challenge has already been disavowed. In my submission, there certainly does not need to be any embarkation on the, I think the term used was fine-grained analysis. There does not need to be any such fine-grained analysis in order for the planning judgment to amount to a judgment. And if my learned friend wants to go behind that judgment, he must plead rationality, and he's expressly disavowed an intention to do that. And in that context, I rely upon my learned friend, Miss Wiggley's reliance on how Mr Kimlin puts matters himself at paragraph 16 of his own skeleton. It was there.
Paragraph 16.
Paragraph 16 of my learned friend, Mr Kimlin's skeleton that's in the core bundle at page nine. And what he does there is to set side by side what the officer did say, which is, it is not considered that part A of this policy can be given any weight alongside, and I do adopt what my learned friend, Miss Wiggley, says in this context, what he necessarily is telling the court would have been acceptable, else why make the comparison? He compares it with, in my professional judgment, having regard to the change in national policy, I would not give this part of this policy any weight. That second formulation is one that the appellant would accept, and we say, my lord, that on the basis of the matters that I'm going now to take your lordship to, that second formulation is precisely how the first formulation should be understood.
The first formulation being the officer's actual formulation.
My lord, yes. So I'm afraid my scribbles have been a little misleading. That was the third point. I can now take you to the fourth and final point. And my lord, that is to pick up on a point that arose in the context of my learned friend's submissions this morning, and his suggestion that it has not been expressly. that it has not been expressly pleaded by either the first respondent or the second respondent, that it was open as a matter of law to attach no weight to policy in this instance. My Lord, I can address that very briefly. The reason why that point has never been directly grappled with by either the first or second respondent is because it has never been put in issue. It has never been suggested by the appellant that the first respondent was not entitled to attach no weight to paragraph A of Policy 7.3. What we can see, and I give your lordship two references. They are effectively the same, but it's put in the same, on the same basis that paragraph sixty of Milner-Fremer's skeleton argument in the High Court.
Sixty.
Six-zero, and the reference for that is core bundle, tab eighteen, page two-two-four.
Just a second. Did you say two-two-four?
Two-two-four.
Thank you.
What your lordship sees there is the following, it is open to a decision maker to give no weight to a policy if the circumstances indicate that it is appropriate. Weight is a matter for the decision maker that is trite, but that is no part of the claimant's case. The claimant's case is that the O R clearly and boldly states that no weight can be given. So what we see there is a contention, a submission to the effect that it is recognized that it is legitimate to give no weight to a policy. Now, precisely the same, or as near as makes no difference, is stated in paragraph sixty-one of Milner-Fremer's statement of facts and grounds, or rather the appellant's statement of facts and grounds. And for your lordship to note, that is at tab twelve, page one-four-five of the core bundle.
Paragraph sixty-one.
Paragraph sixty-one. It's put on the same basis, which is that we, claimant stroke appellant, recognize that it is legitimate to attach no weight to policy. What is not said at any point is, notwithstanding, that is the legal position, it was not lawful to attach no weight to the policy provision in this instance. If Milner-Fremer did want to put that point in issue, it was necessarily incumbent on the point to have been raised, and it is never raised, not in the statement of facts and grounds, not in the High Court skeleton, nor in the skeleton put before your lordships. So to the extent that it is said, well, we don't know what the respondent's case on this point is because they've never gone as far as putting one. The reason why we've not put a case is because the matter's never been put in issue. But I can confirm that certainly for my part, our position is that not only is it legitimate as a point of law or principle to attach no weight, but in the present case, it was also legitimate.
Can we just revisit law?
My Lord, might I just ask this, because I don't have hard copy before me, but what I do have is Tesco's. And the very next point I'm going to take your lordship to, take the Court to, is this issue.
Well, what I was really after was to see this in previous authority. This proposition actually spelled out in previous authority. I'm not saying it's wrong. I simply want to find where it is actually said. And it was being suggested to us before the adjournment that paragraph forty-six of law might provide it.
I am not going to.
The bow means to take us to Tesco if you wish.
I'm not going to rely on law. What I'm going to do, if your lordship is content, is to turn away from my initial submissions.
Right.
And now I'm going to make five concise submissions on ground one, the first of which addresses your lordship's point.
All right.
In terms of this first point, the error asserted in this ground of challenge is a supposed failure to take account of Policy 7.3a. That is how matters are put on page five of Milner-Fremer's skeleton. Your lordship turns that up very briefly.
Paragraph, sorry.
It's above paragraph six, my Lord. We see the bold heading in caps, judgment below, grounds of appeal, and then ground two, failure to take account of Policy 7.3a. That we say is a wholly incorrect premise from which to start consideration of this ground, and it is manifestly wrong in fact. To establish that proposition, I ask, let your lordship turn to tab one in the supplementary bundle. And then to paragraph six-spot-one-nine on page thirty-one. Six-point-one-nine, and this is a paragraph that we skipped past before. But paragraph six-point-one-nine says this, with respect to the saved policies of the North Yorkshire Waste Management Plan, Policy 7.3, reworking of deposited waste, is the relevant one. So what we have in terms is a situation where the officer brings this policy expressly into play. It is identified as the relevant policy. It is wrong in those circumstances for Milner-Fremer to gloss the officer's treatment of the policy as one where it has been disregarded. The policy has not been disregarded. It clearly hasn't been disregarded. The complaint, so far as Milner-Fremer has one, goes to weight. And this distinction is important. And I ask your lordship to turn in the first instance to our skeleton argument at first instance. It's in the core bundle at tab twenty. And if one turns within that tab to page two-six-one.
Yeah.
And if your lordship turns to paragraph forty-four.
Yeah.
Second sentence beginning halfway along the line. See, the claimant rightly accepts that it is open to a decision maker to give no weight to a policy if circumstances indicate that it is appropriate. Or circumstances indicate that is appropriate. We then have the footnote. And the reason I take footnote is because it takes us straight to the relevant citation from Tesco's.
Yes.
Lord Hoffman, the law has always made a clear distinction between the question of whether something is a material consideration and the weight which it should be given. The former, i.e. material consideration, is a question of law. And the latter, weight, is a question of planning judgment, which is entirely a matter for the planning authority. Provided that the planning authority has regards to all material considerations, it is at liberty, provided that it does not lapse into Wensbury irrationality, and of course, that's not pleaded here, to give them whatever weight the planning authority thinks fit, or no weight at all.
Yes, we all know that, but the question I was asked was whether it's ever explicitly been tied to the proposition of giving no weight at all to a development plan policy. That's the point I was after. It doesn't necessarily matter at all whether or not it has, but I just wanted to track it down if it has been. And I couldn't find it in my own judgment in law, I don't think. And the way in which Lord Hoffman puts it here doesn't state that. It may not be controversial.
But my Lord, I.
To help you and others, section thirty-eight-six refers to the development plan, and it also refers to other material considerations, or material considerations indicating otherwise. I mean, it's axiomatic, of course, that the development plan is a, contains material considerations as such. So the broad proposition that you can give no weight to a material consideration if that is a rational thing to do would, without more, encompass policies in the development plan as a matter of principle. So it would have to be some modifying statement by a judge or Court.
Yes, my Lord, I am not aware of any statement of, at any level.
No, no, it may be a windmill at which Don Higioti is tilting, but I will tilt at it until I'm told to stop, I think.
Well, I suppose, in response, my Lord, I would say this. What we have is a well-understood principle.
Yeah.
And I do point to Tesco's in this regard, as to the fact that material considerations are matters to which much weight, little weight, or indeed no weight can be given.
Yeah. So policies are within that compass.
Absolutely so, my Lord. And absent any statement of the Court ruling definitively otherwise, that wider principle must apply to policies in the same way that it applies to any other consideration that weighs in a planning judgment. All matters of weight lie with a decision maker. All matters, or judgments as to weight rather, lie with the decision maker. And that principle must have application to policies, whether at a local level or a national level, in the same way that it applies to anything else.
Yeah.
So having promised that I was going to address your lordship's point, I see now that I wasn't going to address it at all, but now I have at least given you my decision.
You have addressed it, and the tilting will stop the time being.
Well, in the event that your lordship wants another round.
No, I'm not, no, I'm not going there. I've asked the question, I think I, to be fair, I've asked it of all three advocates.
My Lord, on that basis, I'm going to turn to the second submission I want to make in the context of ground one. And this relates to the wording in the officer's report complained of by the appellant. And in this context, what I want to ask the Court to do is turn up Mansell in the authorities' bundle at tab four. Consider paragraph forty-two and the catalogue of your lordship's observations regarding planning officers reported to committee. So that's internal page one-four-six-eight of Mansell.
Yeah.
And your lordship has obviously been taken, or rather, the Court has been taken to this paragraph more than once already. What I want to turn to is sub-paragraph three. Where the line is drawn between an officer's advice that is significantly or seriously misleading, misleading in a material way, and advice that is misleading but not significantly so, and this is the nug, my Lord, will always depend on the context and circumstances in which the advice was given. Now, my Lord, we say that consistent with how your lordship put matters in Mansell, context is everything here. Picking up on a point raised by Milner-Fremer Miss Wiggly, paragraph six-twenty and the crucial statement, it is not considered that... That advice was not in the form of a legal intervention by the counsel solicitor. It was contained in the body of a report prepared by a planning officer, which type of reports habitually and necessarily give advice as to weight attaching to policy. Further, in terms of context, that wording complained of was not couched, expressly at least, in terms of a legal direction. For example, it wasn't stated, as a matter of law, you can attribute no weight, or the legal position is X. And what we say is that in circumstances where the document is not written by a lawyer, it's written by someone who would not expect, who rather, members certainly would not expect, to be opining on points of law, it is wrong to read the document as though matters had been put on the basis of a legal direction. Because instead, what in fact we are seeing is a wholly typical recommendation as to the degree of weighting which the officer considers should be adopted by members in reaching their decision. If it had been intended to be understood as a legal direction, in my submission, one would have expected there to be far more of an, how can I put it, far more of a flag to that effect, a direct and express statement, and of course, there is none.
Yeah.
So my Lord, we do rely on Mansell, we point to context, and we say the Court, when it has regard to context, should adopt the interpretation which we say it ought. That takes us on to my third point. As to the fact of this being a recommendation and not a legal direction for which the appellant suggests, we say it's appropriate to look at two matters here. Firstly, the entirety of the clause in question. And I won't take long on this because it was a point picked up by Mr. Justice Lane at first instance. It's been picked up by Milner-Fremer Miss Wiggly, and it's also been picked up by your lordship. The clause in question does not simply say that no weight can be given. It says instead, it is not considered that. That wording clearly demonstrates an intention to communicate judgment. For your lordship's note, at first instance, paragraph one-two-eight of Mr. Justice Lane's judgment identified this point. And Mr. Justice Lane stated in terms, this is unquestionably. judgment identified this point, and Mr. Justice Lane stated in terms, this is unquestionably the language of someone expressing their own professional judgment. Now, we note that the appellant, at times at least, is at pains to look past the use of the term, it is considered that. Certainly those words are omitted from its summary of its ground of challenge at paragraph five, sub-paragraph two of its skeleton. I don't ask that your lordships turn that up, but your lordships have the note. Further, the claimant denies, sorry, the appellant rather, denies that the statement is in fact one of judgment in paragraph thirteen of the skeleton. And we say that is simply wrong and that Mr. Justice Lane is simply right. In circumstances where one looks at the language, use of the phrase, it is considered, necessarily imports judgment into the statement. And as far as this morning, your lordships were suggesting that incorporating the term judgment would have made the difference, that is what we say is the effect of using the term, it is considered, or it is not considered. The second issue in this context, and again, I'm sure it's one that's not lost on the court, is the fact that the wording which the appellant complains of is used as common currency throughout the officer report. Now, the fact that it is used as common currency is certainly relevant in terms of what it communicated to members. And in this context, your lordships will note that when my learned friend Mr. Kimlin was putting his position this morning, we focus, perhaps understandably, uniquely on paragraph six twenty as supplemented by paragraph seven five. And if we turn that up, because we should have it in front of us, it's in the supplementary bundle, tab one, page thirty-one. Your lordships will see halfway down the paragraph, hence it is not considered that part A of this policy can be given any weight. So your lordships were taken to that and my learned friend built his castle upon it. But if your lordship looks to our skeleton argument, paragraph thirty-six, your lordships will see that there are multiple examples of precisely the same terminology being used elsewhere. And rather than have your lordships turn up my skeleton, rather, our skeleton, mine and Mr. Westerway's, I'm going to take your lordship to the key comparisons. Firstly, paragraph six point two two of the officer report, page thirty-two. Three lines up from the bottom of the substantive paragraph. The core strategy postdates the 2011 NPPIF as adoption was in 2013, and it is considered that the core strategy can be given full weight. So again, it is considered, and again, can be given, this time round, it's full weight. If one moves to paragraph six point forty-three, a couple of pages over, on page thirty-seven, the final sentence reads as follows, however, as the subject of this report relates to the supply of alternatives to land one primary aggregates, it is considered that moderate weight can be given. Lastly, and to complete the spectrum at six point forty-seven, over the page on page thirty-eight, the final sentence reads, therefore, it is considered that limited weight can be given. Now, I use those three examples because we see one which uses the precise same terminology but speaks to full weight, one that uses that terminology speaking to moderate weight, and one that uses the terminology speaking to limited weight. There are other examples of it is considered that X weight can be given, examples in particular being six point three three, six point four four, six point four five. But the short point is this, it's used throughout the report. It cannot sensibly be said that members looking at all these various different contexts understood that in each one of these contexts, the officer was saying that as a matter of law, you must give this weighting to this policy. And I say that because if it is to be understood that this was a legal direction at paragraph six point two zero, it must follow that the same legal direction is being given in all these other contexts. And of course, there's no criticism by the appellant of any of these other contexts. None of these are said to be significantly misleading and drawing the committee into error, and the reason why it's not being said is because it simply wouldn't be tenable. If it wasn't misleading at six twenty, if it wasn't misleading in all these other contexts, it wasn't misleading in paragraph six twenty. Members knew that they were being given a recommendation as to weighting, and they knew that they were free to depart from it. That takes us then on to four of five, so we're almost on the home straight. The position of members. And I say that because what we say we are looking at here is nothing more than mildly unhelpful use of language. It's as per Mr. Justice Green in Timmins, as cited by the judge at first instance in this case at paragraph one two one, I don't ask your lordship to turn that paragraph up, but there we see Mr. Justice Lane cite Mr. Justice Green in Timmins, referencing that it would be wrong to assume that every infelicity of language or expression by the officer will necessarily have exerted material impact. We are looking at infecility of language, to the extent, infelicity of language, to the extent we are looking at anything here. And I say that because this language has no impact in circumstances where members of a planning committee are rightly assumed to have a good working knowledge of how the planning system works. What we say is the appellant's case necessarily takes the members effectively for children with no experience and no expertise, and that is simply wrong. Your lordships will be aware, of course, that there are many authorities on this point. In the bundle, we have the decision of Mr. Justice Holgate in the cooperative case, and your lordship was taken by my learned friend, Mr. Kimlin, to Mansell. But I think actually, perhaps, the more pertinent decision to take your lordship to in this context is Lee Valley.
Well, it's also actually in Morge, Baroness Hale, and it's in a case called Corbett, Corbett number one, Court of Appeal, twenty nineteen.
Well, I mean, your lordship will have far more of the references than I do. I point only to the ones in the bundle that we have here, and we have them, we have the cooperative decision and the Lee Valley decision before us. If it's easier, what we also have is our skeleton argument, because I cite both the relevant paragraphs, both the relevant citations in our skeleton argument at paragraphs twenty-five and twenty-six. And I'll only use one of them. If one goes to paragraph twenty-five of our skeleton, we note what your lordship had to say in Lee Valley. It is well established that planning officers' reports to committee must be read not in an unduly critical way, but fairly and as a whole. Counselors on planning committees can be expected to be reasonably familiar with local circumstances. Now, pausing there, I may be wrong, but recalling how matters are put in Mansell, your lordship's reference there was only to being familiar with local circumstances. Of course, that is correct, but what Lee Valley does is go way beyond, way beyond recognizing familiarity with local circumstances. Your lordship continues, familiar with local circumstances and with relevant policies at national and local level, and to understand what statute requires of them when determining an application for planning permission. Now, in my submission, that necessarily must, does, has to incorporate, has to include an understanding that they themselves, members, are the decision-makers, and it is up to them to attach weight to policies and other material considerations in a way that seems fit to them.
In this instance, we're dealing with the North Yorkshire Waste Local Plan. That was promulgated by this authority.
Oh, yes.
The committee we're dealing with is the Planning and Regulatory Functions Committee of the County Council.
My lord, yes.
Which is here acting as mineral planning authority.
My lord, yes.
The members who sit on that committee sit as, in a delegated role, as mineral planning The limited number of cases they see are minerals cases and cases pertaining to, for example, secondary aggregates.
My lord-
Is that right?
It would be matters relating to minerals and potentially waste.
Well, waste as well, yes.
Yeah, so minerals and waste, those being county reserve matters, as your lordship will know.
Yes, they're matters, they're matters that were, in a sense, in the last salient reform of the planning system, were carved out for the county councils, whose powers were reduced, whose planning powers were reduced by that reform.
My lord, that is right. So these, this, this case falls full square within their ambit of responsibility. And they can and should be taken to understand that in the context of minerals and waste decisions, matters of weight are for them. Because what my learned friend is asking the court to assume is that they were not aware of that, or that they would meetly, and without being told expressly that this wasn't for them, they would assume that it wasn't for them. But only assume that it wasn't for them in the context of paragraph six point two zero, and to skip merrily past all the other references where the same wording is used. And, my lord, we say that's simply wrong.
At the meeting, we have the minutes, I think.
We do.
Was there a legal officer present?
My lord, I don't know, that may be one where my learned friend, Miss Wigley, has to take instructions.
I don't think the identification of those present officers there.
What I can say as a matter of certainty is that there was no statement made by any legal officer to the effect that weighting of these policy considerations was capped in the way that my learned friend, Mr. Kimlin, suggests members understood it to be.
Yes?
Well, on that basis, in fact, I think I draw stumps on ground one there, and I'll, my final point is perhaps more relevant to ground two. So unless I can assist your lordships further in relation to ground one-
No, we can go to ground two then.
Okay. We then move to ground two, and before touching on that-
Are you adopting Miss Wigley's argument here as well? That's general, is it your adoption?
My lord, yes, I mean, there are a couple of points where your lordship will perhaps note, and we divert ever so slightly or put matters on a slightly different basis, but I do, for the most part, adopt precisely what is said.
Ground two.
The first point to note in this context is one that arises out of my learned friend, Mr. Kimlin's comments about interdependency. And I'm sure the court is well aware of these matters, but I clarify them for my own sake as much as anything else. Ground two fails, indeed does not leave the starting gate, if ground one fails. That is common ground, and my learned friend helpfully volunteered that in the quarter of the morning. So to that extent, ground two is wholly dependent on ground one. There is also a degree of interdependency, however, because we say ground one cannot succeed unless ground two also succeeds. Because unless the appellant can make a case to the effect that consideration of BPEO in the context of policy seven three A might have resulted in a difference to the decision, then its ground of appeal has no substantive merit in any event. And your lordships will have seen that we addressed this issue in paragraphs forty-four and following of our skeleton. I don't propose to address the court on the point at any length, given the position is set out, we say clearly in our skeleton. We simply note that the claimant does not, as my learned friend, Miss Wigley, has already submitted, the claimant, the appellant, does not identify any alternatives which might have influenced the committee's thinking, had members determined to reject the advice of their officer and attach some degree of weight to policy seven three A. And on that basis, we say there is no substance to the complaint. All the talk of alternatives, barring the issue of transport, all the talk of alternatives is at a most general level. There is no specific alternative to which the appellant points. In terms of transport-related issues, your lordship has seen already that those were considered in the report. We have the reference, your lordship had the reference, I think, in our skeleton argument. It's also identified by Mr. Justice Lane in his judgment. Matters of alternatives in the context of transport were proposed and were considered. The only other alternative to which my learned friend seems to point is this do-nothing alternative. That being a point not raised in the court below, it's one that we've sought to address by putting in the relevant extracts from the environmental But irrespective of that document, which is at tab twelve in the supplementary bundle, we say that members were necessarily aware of the do-nothing alternative. That was the baseline against which the proposal must necessarily be considered. And in any event, one sees in the officer's report, both in the paragraphs that my learned friend, Miss Wigley, referenced- both in the paragraphs that known friend Miss Wigley referenced, and also at paragraph 7.141, consideration of alternatives, and in particular the do-nothing alternative, one sees the thrust of that addressed in the paragraphs known friend Miss Wigley references, and also our 7.141. We have dealt with alternatives. Officers had read the environmental statement insofar as it considered alternatives, and the substance of what is in the officer's report draws on that analysis. The appellants do not point to any particular alternative. And turning back to my skeleton argument, our skeleton argument at paragraph 46. I just want to pick up matters in the penultimate sentence. There, I mean, if it's in your lordship's bundle, it's bundle page 39 at tab four. What we see there, what we stated there, rather, is as follows. The appellant's skeleton argument, and I'm three lines up from the bottom at the end of the line. The appellant's skeleton argument at paragraph 26 appears to acknowledge that no party raised any alternatives that were not considered by the first respondent, but argues that it is not permissible to limit the range of options to those canvassed by consultees. Pausing there. Before lunch, the court asked the question, well, did the then claimant, did the parish council raise the issue of alternative? Your lordships will have had an opportunity to look at those representations at tab 10 in the bundle. Your lordships will have seen that there's absolutely no reference to alternatives and policy 7.3a, BPEO, nothing at all. And we then come back to what we say at the end of paragraph 46. How known friend puts matters, that is to say, it is not permissible to limit the range of options to those canvassed by consultees, is tantamount to asking the court to speculate in the absence of any evidence that some important matter was left out of account. We say that that is a fundamentally improper approach. One cannot have a situation where the court is being asked to speculate in that fashion. If it is to be said that there was a relevant matter to which regard was not had, that matter must be identified. It's on a slightly different point, but I am advised, and since your lordship raised the question, I should raise it. It appears that there was a legal adviser at the committee meeting. And the reference for that is the supplementary bundle, tab 11, on page 304. And if the court drops to the penultimate bullet beginning a member highlighted, we can see that in the final sentence, four lines up from the bottom, halfway along, in response to this matter, the committee's legal adviser stated that whilst traffic and impact were planning matters that could be considered... dot, 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 dot. So it appears there was a legal adviser present.
Yeah.
Unless I can assist the court further in respect of ground two, I then move very briefly to section 31.2a.
No, no, I was simply seeing if my colleagues had questions, but we don't at the moment have questions, so you carry on.
On that basis, turning to section 31.2a, the court is obviously familiar with the statutory provision and what it requires. And in terms of the point put by the court to known friend Miss Wigley a moment ago, namely that, well, how can we say that it would be highly likely that it wouldn't have made a difference in circumstances where the advice had been different? And let's say the advice had not been, and let's refer back to known friend's skeleton argument, use his positing of the correct wording. Paragraph 16. Had the advice in the report been, in my professional judgment, having regard to the change in national policy, I would not give this part of this policy any weight. Had that been the position?
But you also have to posit that the members have misunderstood what they were told as you can't give it weight because I tell you so. It's not just changing the words.
No.
It's changing the words and their understanding, because that's implicit in his ground one.
Yes, now I...
And what's said against you, in short, is, well, you've got members who were evenly divided till the chairman cast his vote, and one of them, if told, well, you can go into BPEO if you want to, might have said, well, I'd like a bit more about transport movements. How can we exclude that possibility? Or say that it's highly unlikely that it would have occurred?
Well, on that point, the position we say is clearly and unequivocally that where policy is no longer reflective of national policy, where policy has been overtaken by national policy, such that BPEO, which concept was drawn from national waste policy, but has since been abandoned by national waste policy, in those circumstances, it simply isn't conceivable that whatever advice members were given, they would attach a substantial level of weight to that policy. Because the NPPF speaks now and spoke then in terms of consistency with policy. And I heard your lordship's point this morning as regard, well, it's not so much an inconsistency as such, they could sit alongside one another. In my respectful submission, that is not a fair reading of the position. One has a national policy grounded in BPEO, and a local policy is drawn up on that basis. One then moves to a national policy which has nothing to do and says nothing about, and which entirely abandons BPEO. In those circumstances, it cannot be right to view the policies as being consistent for practical purposes. And I do say that it is highly unlikely that in those circumstances, even had members understood that they were not allowed to attach weight, but then suddenly realised that they could attach weight, in those circumstances, it is highly unlikely that they would have attached such weight to that policy provision that it would have made a difference to the decision. Because given the fundamental difference in approach between national policy and local policy, it would have been irrational and inappropriate, I do put it that high. It would have been wholly inappropriate to determine this planning application by reference to a policy already almost 15 years old, substantially out of date, and substantially overtaken by national policy. In those circumstances, we say it is highly unlikely that, had the position been different in terms of how the advice was put and how members had understood it, they would have reached a different decision.
The uncomfortability for the court listening to such submissions is that it feels drawn closer and closer to the making of a planning judgment. And that was cautioned against by this court in Plan B er, if you recall the passage.
My lord, I do.
That is the tension, if you like, which is created by the way in which that provision in section 31 of the Senior Courts Act is framed.
My lord.
It does draw the court towards the exercise of, I will say it, speculating as to an outcome. If, here, if different weight, i.e. above no weight, had been given to a policy which requires BPEO, even where there is, as you submit, a treatment of alternative transport options. That's the court's conundrum.
Well, my lord, I should say this, we do, of course, have sympathy for the court in that regard, and we understand that the court will never to step into the context of planning judgment. That said, section 31.2a necessarily and unavoidably imports a degree of judgment on the part of the court. And you've already been taken to the Gathercole decision. I know the court is familiar with it already. Paragraph 38 states in terms, and rightly so, we say, that it is important that a court faced with this application, an application for judicial review, does not shirk the obligation posed by section 31.
Yes, and Gathercole puts it very starkly. In terms of shirking an obligation, of course, the court has to do it. But in doing it, the court has to exercise proper restraint. So not to shirk it is fine, but if doing it, exercising appropriate restraint, that holds one back, as the court, from venturing into the realms of planning judgment.
My lord...
I mean, you make the submission which, in a sense, you must. And I'm not sure that you can develop it further than you have.
No, no, my lord, you're absolutely right. We recognise, as we must, that the planning judgment is not a matter for this court.
No, of course.
But we point to section 31.2a in the context, which I have done, and in so seeking to rely, I rely on the submissions that I've made in the context of ground one. But unless I can assist your lordships further, those were the only submissions I had to make.
Thank you very much, Mr Kimbin.
Thank you.
Your reply?
In respect of ground one, the first point is short. All that I have to show is might, that members of the committee might have been misled. In the context of the submissions that were made, what one has assisted in my submission by recalling that. But secondly, reading the officer's report as a whole, we just see where that takes us, reading the officer's report as a whole. Because so much has been made with tremendous emphasis on it is considered that. So can we just turn to the officer's report at 7.5, page 48?
7.5?
The 7.5 paragraph, my lord, yes. Where we see that, of course, referring back to 6.20, but we see that there is no reference there to it is considered that, that the words which are relied upon to import, according to my known friend's, the question of judgment. Of course, one goes to 6.20 first, because that's the logical way to approach them. But 7.5 will have an equal, an additional, and reinforcing impact upon the reader of the report, who, as we've had it emphasised, is going to read the report as a whole. And so if that is a point that's particularly prominent in this case, I submit it helps the appellant. If the court accepts, well, there is this exercise of finding it is considered that throughout the report, it's particularly striking that it's in one of these two paragraphs we're looking at, it's absent. So I say it helps the appellant.
Can I just ask you about the way you put your opening submission, which was, if members of the committee might have been misled, read as a whole? I mean, might contemplates any possibility, even a 1% possibility, surely that can't be the test we apply?
A 1% possibility? No.
Because that would be might?
Yes. Well, if I might say so, that's a very interesting point.
It wasn't intended to be, I just wanted to test.
Yes.
Well, what's the answer to it?
Because there is so much material in what we deal with day to day, where one encounters that question as to what something which is small, something which has a low impact, all of those sorts of terms. And the difficulty really comes when the thinking is confined to numerical terms. And so my answer to my lord's question is not to put it in numerical terms. And I don't think that, if I may say so, I don't think that was what was in the minds of the authors of the judgments that we've looked at. And so where it uses the term might, it has an ordinary English meaning, which it would be improper of me to speculate as to where that would end up in numerical terms, and I would submit it doesn't help. But in the decided cases, it's put in those two ways, and I'm simply emphasising the lower bars available to me.
Well, I suppose it's sub-paragraph two of my lord's judgment in Mansell, paragraph 42.
Yes.
But for the flawed advice on page 71 of the bundle, but for the flawed advice it was given, the committee's decision would or might have been different.
Yes.
So there is authority.
Well, that's if there is flawed advice.
Yes, exactly.
But to determine whether there's flawed advice, what is the test? Because I understood you to be saying that if they might have been misled, then it's flawed advice, which is actually taking might in the wrong context. You have to decide whether there's flawed advice, which I suspect is, is there flawed advice or not? And then if they might have been misled by the flawed advice, fine, go on.
I accept that.
Yeah, where you come in with the word or might is once you've established that the officer has, and I quote myself, if I may,
Yes, greatly.
Material has led the members on a matter bearing upon their decision.
Otherwise, I was slightly surprised about the test.
You have to get over the first hurdle before you come to the second.
Which is just to show on the normal balance of probabilities, to the extent that applies in public law, that there was flawed advice?
I entirely agree.
Yeah, okay, thank you, sorry to have bothered you.
No, not at all, I'm grateful for the opportunity.
If, no, it would help the court, if you adopt the Mansell approach, then we needn't trouble you with further questions on that point. You're not seeking to...
I do.
Causes to adjust Mansell approach.
Not at all.
Right.
My ambitions are altogether more modest.
Well, it's not inconceivable, but unlikely.
I'm not going to ask how unlikely.
Don't go there. Anyway, we understand you to put your submissions on the basis of the Mansell approach. You don't seek to contend for a more exacting approach than that. That's a fair...
That's very fair, and I'm very grateful. Also, under this point, I just want to cover off the submissions which I made as to so and hence, and to observe that in response to those submissions, very little was said. So while, of course, reading... So while, of course, reading the officer's report as a whole is the right approach, I do draw attention to the submissions which I made and the nature of the submissions which the Court has had in response. Thirdly, I want to turn to the question of, this question of consistency. Very much following on from the point which I've just made, attention is drawn to the use of consistency elsewhere in the report. If we go to six point two zero and seven point five, again, question of consistency is noticeably differently approached, that is important in my submission. Fourthly, as to the Co-op case, Miss Wiggily went to the Co-op case, and as far as I might, looking at what's said by Mr. Justice Holgate in the Co-op case, if you could turn it up at two, I cannot see how it takes things any further at all. So page twenty-one behind tab two, go on to page twenty-two. There, the judge is doing nothing at all but citing well-established principles, summarised in Mansell, and to the extent that there is some particular reliance upon familiarity with the statutory scheme and the approach to planning policies, none of the authorities which the Court's been taken, nor none that I know of, really do anything other than, say, members understand section thirty-eight six, they know development plan, priority, other material considerations. None of the authorities, as far as I read them, go further than that. And so, to the extent that it's been submitted to the Court, that members would be, can be assumed to be able to work out for themselves weight etcetera to be given to policies where there is a change in national waste policy, that is not a position which I concede. It is a step, really, really takes the current authorities a step further, which is not Next, I want to cover the point about whether or not it's either of the respondent's submissions that a simple change in national policy makes a development plan policy irrelevant. Mr. Booth has helpfully clarified his position in that regard, but it does seem at the conclusion of argument that nobody is compounding, that just on its own, that that is enough. So far as pleading points are made by Mr. Booth as to what's said in the High Court skeleton etcetera, I do think, having looked at those, that they're completely clear and consistent with the three principle concessions as to what the relevant legal context is, which I made right at the outset. So I don't take that any further. Lastly, in respect of ground one, I do not concede and do not accept that members have any particularity, any particular familiarity with P C seven three. Firstly, it's a development plan adopted in two thousand and six, it's conceivable, I can't say one way or the other, it's conceivable that a member has been sitting on that planning committee since two thousand and six. But even if that were right, it's not conceivable that they'd have any useful memory of what will have happened in the years prior to two thousand and six, before the adoption of that plan. Secondly.
Do you, sorry, just one question, which hasn't, it's just for clarification, it hasn't arisen actually in the course of argument so far. Do you accept the short history of policy gestation which is set out by Mr. Booth in his skeleton argument? I appreciate that's not the point you're on at the moment, but it's tangential to it.
Yes.
I'm trying to find the reference to it now. Matter of the history of policy relating to BPEO, yes, here it is a paragraph fifteen of Mr. Booth's skeleton argument, is that common ground?
First sentence is, second sentence is, the third sentence needs to be understood in the context that the waste hierarchy was present in, has been present in national waste policy for a very, very long time. So the third sentence, I wouldn't agree with if it is intended to say that in place of, or there's a particular re-emphasis of waste hierarchy, because that was pre-existing. But yes, the short.
Meant really a matter of fact.
Yes. The overall history of the way in which national waste policy changed is right.
So where it goes to matter of fact, then there wouldn't be dispute.
That's right.
Yeah, thank you, that does help us.
Returning to seven three, and whether or not it is something that members would be familiar with, the next point is that PFA reuse is a relatively unusual topic area, and that's both of the respondent's cases. There isn't much of it left, and perhaps there are cases, there isn't anywhere else to go to in the district, or if there is, there may be one just up some, a long way further north. So it's not, I can put it this way, meat and drink for members, what is, is primary aggregate applications and matters associated with those, discharge of conditions connected with quarrying, romp applications, it's standard minerals work, standard waste planning work, waste transfer stations, we see that, if we care to do so, within the minutes, the same day they had a waste transfer station matter.
So you say it's, the point here is it's relatively unusual subject matter.
Yes. Which takes me to ground two. And it's said by both respondents, parish council, in its objections, didn't raise alternatives, they took professional advice, nothing there. I respond strongly to that, it misunderstands the relative roles. Firstly, the applicant will not have been taken by surprise that the question of BPEO is live in any application, it's there on the policy, which everybody agrees is the key policy as to the principle of development. So whether or not the applicant fully explores the available options is entirely a matter for the applicant, and if he doesn't do so, that's at its own risk. It's then a question for the Mineral and Waste Planning Authority to apply its own policies in accordance with the law. It is not any part of the parish council's duty to tell either of those two informants what they should be doing. And so, the point is not accepted. This is not the sort of point which is only known to the parish council about the particular importance of a very well-used public footpath, or their local knowledge about the presence of newts, something which is in their own purview, it's a policy principle in the key So far as alternatives are concerned, we've had an excursion into the environmental assessment, and I can understand why that is so, and it's properly so. But I do make the Court, remind the Court about what it is that an environmental assessment does with alternatives. The Court will recall that the schedule to the regulations in respect of alternatives only requires assessment of those alternatives considered by the developer. Regulations do not require the developer to consider any particular spectrum of alternatives. And so, that's why one doesn't see challenges based on EIA and alternatives, or at least you don't see them succeeding, because the obligation is frankly so weak.
So the submission might be that an assessment of alternatives, for what it is worth, in the environmental statement, it cannot be equated to a BPEO exercise.
Not at all.
Properly conducted.
And we've seen the extent to which alternatives have been considered, and Miss Wiggily took us to the officer's report in that regard. But with respect, that misses the point. The point is to ensure that one is looking at the alternatives which may be practicable, rather than looking at what the policy support is said to be for the particular proposal. Because the points that the Court was taken to were all about whether or not there's policy support for the use of secondary aggregates. Of course there is. But that doesn't answer the question whether or not the BPEO is the use of a different secondary aggregate, whether the BPEO is in fact the use of a primary aggregate. And that's not such a fanciful question when one has what is effectively a hill that has been built, and the proposal is to deconstruct it. It's not, this particular PFA application is not simply about reuse, which might have happened in times when Egbert was operating, which was perhaps to have a proposal to have a brick-making plant or a block-making plant at a particular location, using PFA as it comes from the power station, that's the sort of thing which would also fall within that.
Yes, to take it straight from the power station to the block-making plant, rather than to bind it up somewhere else.
Yeah. So the range of considerations here is potentially quite broad, and I do submit that it's not for me to say what the considerations are. It's for me to say, well, to what extent have you considered as part of this policy what the environmental effects would be of the reasonable alternatives? It's said in respect of this ground that it makes no material difference to the outcome.
This is our section thirty-one.
No, no, well, it was said in respect of ground two.
Right, I see.
That these points in respect of ground two make no material difference to the outcome, and I respectfully disagree, that the obvious effects on a decision are manifest once one understands what the proposal is. So I would go so far as to say that that submission is not tenable. Rather, what should have happened is that the subject should have been properly explored. As to ground three, solely this, one point. My lord asked a question of Mr. Booth, and one got close to the closing submissions in a planning inquiry, that that's not where we should be. But can I give a different answer to the same question as to what members, what members might have done? And just simply invite the Court to countenance the possibility that members might decide to apply the important policies in the development plan. That might be what they would do, having regard to the emphasis which is made in the officer's report on section thirty-eight six, apply the development plan. Those are my submissions in reply, unless there's any other matter on which I can help.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Kimbin. Thank you. And well, thank you all, leading counsel, the juniors, including juniors afar, and those who sit behind, for most clear and helpful oral and written submissions. It will not surprise you to hear me say that we shall reserve our judgment, of which a draft will in due course be circulated, for the suggestion of typographical and minor factual errors only, not as to the substance. At the same time as the draft judgment or judgments is or are circulated, parties should endeavour to agree a draft order, and any submissions on consequential matters should be submitted simultaneously. Parties are reminded of the imperatives that go with the embargo, which is routinely imposed on draft judgments, that is important. With that, we conclude, thank you all very much.